Welcome to the April 9th meeting of Capitola City Council. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Batur.
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Here. You all stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a presentation this evening. Eddie, for Rod Bunter, new employee? Our Public Works Department.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce our newest Public Works employee, Rob Bunter. Rob was born in Oregon but moved to Santa Cruz when he was seven. He grew up in the Live Oak area and attended local high school, or local schools, graduating from high school in 1997. Rob has worked in the construction industry for the last 12 years and worked last summer driving logging trucks. Rob still lives in Live Oak with his family, Rochelle and Alyssa. In his spare time, he enjoys fishing and spending time at the beach. Rob is very excited to have this opportunity and looks forward to being part of the Public Works team.
Rob, welcome aboard. If you can drive, if you can drive logging trucks, you can drive street sweepers, right?
Oh, yeah.
That's the most important job in the city.
Well, thanks for the great opportunity. I just, I'm glad to be part of the team and work for such a wonderful place. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Rob.
Thank you, Rob. Welcome.
Tony, can we have a report on closed session, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Norton, members of the city council. There were three items on this evening's agenda. The first was an item of pending litigation in the matter of Schrodell versus the City of Capitola. The council received a status report from the city attorney's office. There was no reportable action on that item. There's also a liability claim in the same matter by Ann Schrodell, which is on your consent agenda this evening. There were conferences with labor negotiators, with employees, the following employee organizations: the Association of Capitola Employees, Capitola Police Captains, Capitola Police Officers Association, Confidential Employees Mid-Management Group, and Department Heads. There were instructions given to the city's negotiators, but no reportable action. Finally, a public employee performance evaluation of the city attorney. And there was no reportable action on that item as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cindari. There was some additional material received by the council, and that's pertaining to item 10B, the Monterey Bay Century Scenic Trail Master Plan. Is there, is there any additions or deletions to the general, to the agenda? Jamie?
Staff has no changes.
This is time for public comment. Oral communication allows for all members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Presentations will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Individuals may not speak more than once during oral communications. If you could sign in as you do this, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I signed in early.
Thank you.
Hi, excuse me. My name's Stephanie Tetter, and I live on Hunipero Court. And within a little two-block area from our house, we have two churches, and a school, and a park. And we are, we are impacted in many ways by traffic in that area. And I'm just wanting to express my opposition to a 6,000-square-foot skate park in Monterey Park. My grandson was visiting for spring break, and he asked me when he comes down, "When is that cool skate park going to be over by New Brighton?" And I, because we're supportive of having a good skate park in that area. And I'm supportive of the skate park at McGregor. I'm not in support of a skate park at Monterey Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Hello. My name is Helen Bryce. Please bear with me as this first part may seem redundant. I am here tonight to express my concerns about the proposed 6,000-square-foot skate park design of 92214 by Dreamland Skate Parks, which I believe is not in the best interests of the residents of Capitola. I am opposed to this project. On February 11th, 2015, the city council voted to move forward with a plan to build the 6,000-square-foot park over the objections of 95 percent of the people living adjacent to Monterey Park. I have read the city council minutes, going back three years to January 26th, 2012, when the city council previously discussed a skate park in Monterey Park. I'm quoting the city council minutes directly. Quote, "Public Works Director Jesburg stated that the next step is for staff to work with the fundraisers, neighbors, and the community regarding council's proposal," unquote. I feel that this very important part of the process has been skipped. The City of Capitola has held meetings for public input regarding other projects. For example, there was a meeting about Rispin Park on February 7th this year, and another is scheduled for April 11th. Input from the February meeting is posted on the City of Capitola website. This is being done before park plans are submitted to the city council. I believe the city has an obligation to listen to the neighbors who live in the area adjacent to Monterey Park. Please reconsider your approval of the skateboard park in Monterey Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
Hi, I'm Doug Bowman. I live on Orchid Avenue, probably about the third closest house to the proposed skate park. I am opposed to the Dreamland Skate Park of 6,000 square feet at this Monterey Park. It seems redundant with the existing efforts going on at New Brighton, on McGregor. And as has been said almost unanimously, every neighbor around this park is not in favor of doing this. And I, and I think that the public discussions and stuff have been overlooked in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council city staff. My name is Richard Lippi. I live on Monterey Avenue. And I'm in support of the McGregor Skate Park over there. I don't see much going on right now, but I guess I'll check into that later to find out why we've got a dormant project. I am opposed to the design by Dreamland Skate Parks for Monterey Park, 6,000-square-foot park, skate park. And drawings are dated September 22nd, 2014, as I said two weeks ago. These are the only drawings that have been submitted for the park, despite all of the neighborhood input and concerns that were placed on this design. Nothing has changed. And I'd like to go back to, since we're, since we're in this situation with the proposed skate park at Monterey Park, and we're going back to January 26th, 2012, I would also like to read from the minutes where it says in part, "Mayor Termini suggested that more studies take place to address intensification issues." And I think that's a very valid and a wise statement to make. There are several projects that have been suggested for Monterey Park, and I think that a comprehensive study is in order for the entire park, not only the park itself, but also parking, parking issues, since Monterey Avenue is understudy for reducing the parking over there. I'd like to say that when the studies come about, I hope that they don't resemble this so-called community meeting that was held January 24th of this year. I did not get this notice, by the way, along with this notice that I did not get, and I'm the closest neighbor to the proposed skate park. And I'd like to read from this community meeting, supposed community meeting. "Please come join us for an informational community meeting for the proposed skate park at Monterey Park. See the revised, smaller skate park layout and design. Learn facts about the project and have your questions answered. We look forward to seeing you." Nowhere in here does it say, "Please give us your suggestions or concerns about our park." It just says, "We're going to tell you what we're going to build." So I hope that when the process starts, and I hope it starts soon, the comprehensive study of Monterey Park, that it takes into consideration all of the community input. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard.
Hi, I'm Terry Tetter. I live on Hunipero Court. I'm already signed in. Just building on what Richard said, any, I think it's important to have a comprehensive study of what's going to happen with the park, because once that 6,000-square-foot chunk of concrete goes in, we're not going to be able to make any changes to it, in terms of removing it. The main thing I want to say tonight is, I've been going around to skate parks, and I downloaded a decibel meter on my iPhone, a very, very handy device. The, I was here the night the proponents talked, and they said that the sound of a skateboard rolling on concrete is only 60 to 65 decibels. And that has been proven out. But I've noticed that the bigger the skate park, the more noise is generated, not from rolling on concrete, but from kickflips and ollies and, and riding on steel rails. Very, very noisy. And the people on Hunipero, and Monterey, and Orchid are going to be affected by that noise. My little meter went up to like 85 and 90 on some of the things that I, that I registered. So I recall that you, the board was actually considering a 2,000-square-foot skate park a couple of years ago. And I'm wondering if you're still considering that, because a smaller park, which would, which would serve smaller children, and have fewer of those radical features, would not be nearly as intrusive. And since there's already a 9,000-square-foot park going in right now, we don't really need another, I don't think, I don't think we really need another park that close. And of course, the city is so small, there really isn't much, many other places to put it. As for the risk in getting there, I don't think most parents, I think most parents are going to bring their kid to the skate park, no matter where it is, and drive them there. So I would hope that you would reconsider the 6,000-square-foot park, which would be a real problem. And I'm hoping that when the plans are submitted, if they are, that we'll have some real community meetings, and the people on Hunipero, Orchid, and Monterey, who are the most affected by it, will be invited this time, instead of having it being done behind our backs. Thank you.
Good evening, Gary Richard Arnold. There's been a lot of information in the last month or so about the measles vaccines. The truth is, that the media keeps out is that there's been no death from measles since 2003. Of the 112 people that have died from measles, they've all been contaminated by four different varieties of measles vaccines. In the month of February in Kenya, the Catholic Bishop Conference there needed an investigation of why sterilants were found in common vaccines distributed throughout that country, and this is the second time that's happened in the last four years. Half of all Indian women under 35 are sterile, because of the vaccination programs they carry on there, partially because of. In Czechoslovakia, four or five years ago, a batch of vaccines came from Baxter International. It killed every animal tested. Fortunately, it prevented the people from getting public vaccines. The head of that organization is Vernon Locke. He's a member of the secret society Skull and Bones, who belongs to, they advocate eugenics, which is a culling of some people. In the state of Texas, some five or six years ago, Bilderberger, Rick Perry, had forced Gardasil shots for women. And there were so many adverse reactions and sterility that that program stopped. The media-generated measles scare left out information that 12 percent of the people in Disney had already been vaccinated, and that the New York outbreak was traced back to a lady that already had her measles shots. A hypodermic needle is a weapon of death in the hands of a state. We know it's used for executions. Forced vaccinations under a Stalin, a Hitler, a Mao, or maybe someday an Obama or Bush, is a weapon of mass destruction. There is only one way to have vaccinations occur, and that is voluntarily between a patient and their doctor. The central coast political machine continues to consolidate power in the hands of the state. And the Bilderberger-owned newspapers, which is the Mercury, the Sentinel, and the Herald, are all owned by Bilderberger-Bill Gates. Your laws and policy represent ICLI, which is a front for the World Bank, and the Rockefeller powerful lobby called California Forward. Old people will be euthanized as useless eaters, and they'll, as they are looked at, an expense to the state. Already, we have a Department of Human Resources, meaning the people are merely a resource for the state. I encourage people watching to look up a YouTube called "Terrible Ted Turner," and then "Bill Gates: 15 Percent Reduction of the Population," and they'll see some of my concern. The only immunity they provide is for the pharmaceutical companies, not the people. And the people are taxed to pay for their errors of, when things go bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Craig Curtis, and I'm a resident of Capitola for 29 years. I live on Washburn Avenue, and needless to say, I've seen many changes in this wonderful community over the many years that I've had the privilege and pleasure of living here. I've seen, with the first being the gymnasium on New Brighton, that impacted my neighborhood. And then, and then I saw the New Brighton Performing Arts Center, which there again impacted the volume of traffic and just people in my community. And as was mentioned before, naturally, we have, and then there was actually, it was Capitola Elementary, and now it's New Brighton Middle School. And believe it or not, that actually had a change in the dynamics of our community also. We have the two churches. But I, I'm coming, and I have spoken here three times over the 29 years that I've lived here, for various reasons, in the community. And tonight, I feel compelled that I must speak again. I am opposed to the Dreamland Skate Park in my community, in my neighborhood. I, I know that it will impact it dramatically, as far as aesthetics, beauty, peace, as well as property values. And even though I'm not directly on Monterey, I know it will have an adverse effect on my, on my home as well. I do not wish to see, or even contemplate, the 6,000-square-foot skate park on Monterey. I am willing and to, and in agreement that it could be in Capitola. If the City of Capitola must have a skate park, then so be it. But may it never be in, where they are proposing it to be at this point. May they really, truly, honestly, and be honest with the people of this community, put it on McGregor rather than in Monterey Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Arroyo, and I live on Monterey Avenue, directly across the street from the proposed park. And I am in opposition to the park. And I'm just here tonight to support the comments of my neighbors against the park going in, skate park.
Thank you, Barbara.
Good evening. I'm against the 6,000-square-foot Dreamland Proposed Park, 92214. And the word keeps bumping around that I've been thinking about through this whole process is children. That word's been flying around a lot through this whole process. The first definition of children in Webster's Dictionary, "A person between birth and full grown, a very young boy or girl." Now, that's all over the map. That can mean anything. I thought, oh, no. I'm not going to be able to use this in my argument at all. I thought for a moment. And of course, it can work. It's such a broad definition that is being used on both sides of the argument. When I think of children, I honestly think of someone being held by the hand to cross the street. That's my definition of children. I also feel proponents of the proposed skate park are banking on people to see children in that same way. When I speak with someone outside Monterey Park area who support the proposed skate park, the response is always the same. How can you not support something for children? This proposed 6,000 square foot has all the noisy and demanding features of the 9,000-square skate park that was first proposed. Young adults of all middle school and high school ages from throughout Santa Cruz County will use this proposed skate park. We need to back up and look at what the neighbors around Monterey Park originally approved to look at, a 2,000-square-foot park that's truly for the children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Norton and city council members, my name is Lisa Steingrube, and as you know, I'm opposed to the proposed skate park as designed by Dreamland in 92214, 2014 at Monterey Avenue. I feel the park was bought and paid for by two moms and their wealthy uncle, Richard Novak, none of whom live in our neighborhood. I am frankly surprised that he would support a project that has been so contentious and negatively received. What is even more egregious to me is the fact that this project was approved with little or no input from the people who would affect it most. We were told that many other neighborhoods were against a park of this size in their vicinity, and that if we organized, presented valid reasons for our opposition, we would be heard, just like the other neighborhood had, neighborhoods had. This is what makes us a democracy. For all its faults, our government at every level has a political process where citizens can and will be heard, and leaders we elect take an oath to represent us and uphold these rights. I don't think that happened in Capitola on February 11th, the city council meeting where we had the support of 95 percent of the surrounding neighbors. The noise and traffic from a park of this size will be monumental in an area that is already very busy and congested, and it will significantly reduce the quality of life for the immediate residents. On a similar note concerning process, and I guess I'm being a little redundant, Helen already pointed out, that the development of Rispin Mansion, to me, has been all about getting Capitola residents involved, planning for activities and features there. And I don't know why this didn't happen with the skate park. When was our community input, and how was the neighborhood involved in the design and formulation of the 922 Proposed Park? We weren't. We just were told that the two moms had a plan, and this is what it was. And the only way my husband and I heard about it is we came to a McGregor Skate Park planning meeting in this same building. And we heard the two moms get up and say, "Well, actually, we're, we're not quite sure. We're not 100 percent sure. We're 96 percent sure of where we want the skate park, but we're not ready to say yet." And all of a sudden, you know, our antennas went up, and we started to worry. And then we finally heard in November that, yes, they wanted it back in our neighborhood, again, where they don't live. And, you know, I, on that similar issue, I guess I want to know what's happening at McGregor, too, because I haven't seen much going on there. And our neighborhood totally is supportive of that. And I think, you know, we might just hopefully think about some things we have set and we brought to light. Thank you.
Lisa, I want to clarify one thing, though, is that this council and city has not approved the skateboard park there. We approved, it's just to bring it to a public hearing where all public can participate and do that. I just want to clarify.
You're right. Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're right.
Good evening, one and all. My name is Mabel Armijo. I've lived for 30 years on McCormick Avenue. And I'm really concerned. I disapprove of the skateboard park being put there. It's not appropriate. It's self-serving for certain people. In terms of business, I see it as having a lot of business, people coming down to our village. That's not the way to attract them, I don't think. And the sacrifice. I'm certainly opposed to it. I know several neighbors are also. And I really ask of you to practice, help us all practice participatory democracy, that we listen and negotiate and figure it out where we can have, especially when there's possibilities at McGregor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mabel. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council on any issue? Please step forward. Okay, we move to comments from staff. Counsel.
Yes. First of all, and those of you who get Western City, it's also available at the library. There's a great article about libraries and how government interacts with libraries. And question for Steve Jesburg, just because he happens to be there.
I knew it was coming.
Yeah. What's the story with McGregor, and why has it stopped? It seems like it had some issues, but...
We had to do some soil testing there, and I do have good news that the construction of the skate park portion of that is going to resume on Monday.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Josh?
So it's already been talked about, the next Rispin meeting, which is going to be the last one, is this coming Saturday, right? So look for it on the website, but basically, it's from 11:00 to 1:00 in the community room right behind us. And this is the, the last chance, I guess, in the conceptual phase for residents to participate in the planning. So I welcome people to come. Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Ed?
I just have an announcement for the Santa Cruz Metro Bus System. There is a public hearing scheduled tomorrow. It'll be a two-part public hearing. Part one will be in Santa Cruz City Hall chambers at 9:00 a.m. It will carry over again till 6:30 at night in Watsonville Council Chambers. And this is in regard to proposed rate hikes for the Highway 17 bus over the hill, and with regards to paratransit cruise rate increases. So if you want to attend those hearings and chime in on, on metro rates tomorrow night, the final vote will be at the Watsonville City Council Chambers. That meeting's starting at 6:30.
Thank you. Stephanie?
I don't have any announcements about any community meetings, but I would encourage you to watch television. The Panetta Lectures are fascinating. And the last one was everything you want to know about energy. The speakers are fabulous. And the community television rebroadcasts it, and so look for it if you get a chance and watch them. They're very, very interesting.
We move to boards, commissions, and committees appointments. Is there any to be discussed? Stephanie, did you want to talk about your planning commission appointment? Announce it?
No.
You don't want to announce it?
No.
Okay. We move the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, we have to advertise the position for two weeks, presumably pursuant to the Matty Act, so it's not ripe yet for an appointment.
Can I, can I suggest that we, that we move forward with openly advertising for the positions that are open within the city, so we have better selections of people? I'm sure there's people within the community who would like to serve on a couple of open boards that we have right now, but we don't seem to have any applicants for those positions. And we actively pursue through the Sentinel or something?
I'll talk to Sue about it, because I may have...
We are currently advertising for the planning commission, the Commission on Environment and Traffic and Parking.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we move the consent agenda. This is an item being enacted by, by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussions of these items prior to the council votes on the action. Let's say, a member of the public or city council requests specific items... A member of the public or city council requests specific items to be discussed for separate review. Items pulled for separate discussion will be considered following general government. Is there any member of the public who would like to pull any of the items on the consent agenda? Please step forward. Being none, counsel?
Yeah, G.
G?
Yeah.
Okay, we will pull item G. Is there any other request? We will move item G to the end of general government at the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda without item G?
So moved. Second?
Got a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. We move to general government, public hearings. Item A is consider the mayor's ad hoc committee recommendation for public outreach plan to develop 420 Capitol Avenue in the Pacific Cove sites. Jamie?
Mr. Mayor, a member of the council. Tonight's hearing will be taking, considering the recommendation from the mayor's ad hoc committee for a specific public process to consider a proposal to redevelop the Pack Cove and City Hall site. And then, secondarily, the committee, which was tasked with the specific task of developing this outreach plan, has volunteered to continue and help with the outreach effort if the council wishes to change its charter. As background, back in 2003, staff was given direction to develop a plan for a parking structure. That was at the time of the entitlements for the temporary parking lot in Lower Pack Cove. The general plan, which was adopted in 2014, outlines a broad vision for this overall seven-acre site that's owned by the city. In 2014, staff brought forward a conceptual project. We attached to an agreement with a private developer to redevelop this site, develop a parking structure, consolidate the parking structure, develop a park in Lower Pacific Cove, and relocate the civic facilities here to the other side of the property. And we'll go into some details on that in a little bit. That agreement was not accepted. Instead, we held a hearing in January, and at that hearing in January, the council formed, directed the mayor to form an ad hoc committee to develop a potential outreach plan for council consideration. The mayor did form the ad hoc committee, which is comprised of all Capitola city residents, and it's got a broad mixture of residents, some names that people know quite well, as well as some relative newcomers to public process. Nevertheless, everyone on the committee is a public or private sector executive with a real wealth of experience that they bring to the table. I guess I'll briefly mention the names. Debbie Hale, Edward Newman, Steve Woodside, Susan Westman, Joel Rika, Dwayne Woods, and John Plack comprise the ad hoc committee. Just taking one quick step back, for folks who may not be familiar with the project, this is the seven-acre site that's owned by the city. It includes today, it includes City Hall where we're sitting right now, the old surface parking lot, which we call the Pack Cove parking lot, which is labeled as number two on this graphic, the Lower Pacific Cove parking lot, which is the temporary parking lot that was constructed last summer, and then this frontage here on Monterey Avenue. And the general plan outlines a broad vision that talks about potentially looking at consolidating the parking, developing a park, open space in the lower area, and trying to find an alternative location for emergency responders out of the floodplain tsunami zone. In response to this, staff tried to develop a project that accomplished a number of the goals in the general plan, to create the park, open space in Lower Pacific Cove, getting the emergency responders out of the floodplain, building a multi-story parking structure to consolidate the surface parking lots and free up the land for other uses, specifically the open space, and finding a way to do all this with a limited impact on the existing general fund, making sure that the project could be financially viable. The project that was originally outlined included, the most specific element of it included a new hotel, which new hotel generates a hotel bed tax, which is an ongoing revenue source for the city, which is unlike virtually any other land use within the city, and could generate a significant revenue stream that could finance long-term bonds for a public So, over the last several months, the ad hoc committee met three times, looked at a number of different options for how public outreach could be conducted. But overall, they focused on a relatively streamlined process that had what we described as early off-ramps, if you will, limited investment at the front end to try to get a broad sense of the public's feeling about the overall goals that could be achieved with the project. The recommendation was dedicating an upcoming city newsletter to the topic. They felt that the topic and the project had enough moving parts and complex elements that using a city newsletter to very clearly articulate how all the pieces of the project could fit together was useful. We talked about dedicated city webpage with all the background information on it that people could access and get information. Holding a facilitated public outreach meeting that's noticed in the newsletter, where people could get an overview of the project and hear the pros and cons, and could ask questions, understanding that at this time, some of the questions that could be posed may not be answerable. They may be questions that require technical studies to answer them. And then, once we've done this education component, doing a survey, mailed-out survey is the recommendation from the committee, that really focuses on getting at the goals, the project goals, are the project goals, how important are they to people? And not, the mail survey, one of the things I would counsel is that I don't think the intent behind it is as a referendum, but instead is to try to get a feeling and a gauge from the community about how the project goals, important they are, and the project costs, how negative they would be to the community. One item the council may wish to consider is that the newsletter, the summer newsletter comes up in late June, early July, and if we were to dedicate the whole newsletter to this topic, it would mean that other items would get bumped, which we do generally fill up our newsletter pretty easily. So, one option, there's two options I think we could consider. One would be a sort of an insert into our existing newsletter. Another would be a third newsletter this year that was dedicated to this topic and would let us keep our regular schedule as well. The costs around those are not too significant, and they all, the cost of this entire outreach plan can be covered within City Manager's Unanticipated Budgets, City Manager's Unanticipated Budget Fund that's already had appropriation for this year. And helping everybody, I think, understand the process, this was a graphic that we used with the ad hoc committee, and the little guy standing back here represents where we are today. And the question is, do we want to get on this, do we want to get on this process or not? And this first step would be kind of the conceptual planning outreach, really getting out in the community and talking about the concept. At that point, we have the option to discontinue work and stop investing any more effort in it. Alternatively, if we decide that it is a project that we want to do, I think the next step would be to consider specific studies that answer some of the questions that could get raised through the outreach. What are the true costs of the project? Look at geotechnical studies to determine where are the feasible places to build, some real specific technical questions, which will cost some money to answer. And then, again, we have the option to discontinue work. If we decide to continue, that's when we get into the more serious design work, we get into our sequin, our permitting process. Ultimately, if permits were issued, we get into authorizing the funding, the bid package, and building it. So, it would be a multi-year effort, and really, where we are at this stage, this is not, tonight is not approving the project, but it's whether we want to start down this path, understanding that there would be off-ramps in the future. So, staff's recommendation is approve the subcommittee's recommended outreach plan. I would like to hear a little bit from counsel about the desirability of having maybe a third newsletter this year or an insert in the summer newsletter. And secondarily, if we are to approve the outreach plan, I think that the ad hoc committee has proven to be a valuable resource, and having them continue to help advise this process could be a valuable thing to consider. So, with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Mike?
City manager, I understood the insert part. I understood the newsletter, how it would kind of co-opt it for one issue. You had mail survey on there, as in, as opposed to a phone survey. Are we anticipating using that newsletter or insert and having a mail survey put in as well?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Tumini, the thought, so to answer your question directly, no, we were thinking that it would be separate. And the reason why we thought it would be separate was to really give a chance at the educational process first, and then do the survey, and we felt like trying to commingle the two, potentially you'd run into trouble where people who didn't have very much background on the project would be answering some of the questions.
And do you have an anticipated cost, because I know a mail survey may prove costly?
So, in thinking...
And it would be, I'm sorry, and it would be to all residents of Capitola, no doubt?
That is correct. In thinking about it, there's really sort of three levels of survey that we discussed, at least conceptually as a subcommittee. The first and the most cost-effective is obviously internet survey, sort of Survey Monkey kind of concept. There was some concern about that potentially being co-opted by special interest groups, just because there's relatively limited control over the survey. The second, in terms of overall cost, was the mail survey that we talked about. To give you a ballpark figure, it's about $3,500 to send something to everyone in the city of Capitola, and so that's what we were looking at for a mail survey, and then give people the opportunity to send it back in or drop it off here at City Hall, drop it off at the community center. The third level of survey that we've done occasionally is the phone survey, where we get the statistically valid information that, you know, involves calling 300 of our residents with specific questions. Those run a little bit less than $20,000 usually when we've done those in the past. So, the recommendation from this group was for a mail survey to be done at the tail end after we had done a pretty good job with outreach and education at the front end.
That's all. I have no other questions.
Thank you.
No questions. Bye, John.
Well, I thank the committee for doing the work. I think this proposal is a good one. I'm very happy about the effort to educate the public first. I think that's excellent. And then, after the survey, is there any anticipation of another meeting to, you know, some issues come up that we might have to address?
I think the thinking was, and we do have Mr. Woodside here who's from the subcommittee, but I think the thinking was at that point that that would conclude this outreach process, we would compile the information into a report, bring it to the council, and get direction about, you know, what's the next step.
Okay. We'll open this to public. Is there any members of public? Steve, please join us.
Hi. My name is Stephen Woodside. I was one of the members of the committee, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to serve. I think the focus of our committee was to narrow, to narrow things to the point where it was cost-effective and really tailored to deal with what's on the table now as a conceptual proposal, and to not just survey the overall whole project as it's been laid out, but to make sure we have questions that go to each element. So, we provide the council with more robust information about what people think about the whole project, and then what people think about maybe various elements. So, that's how we interpreted our task, and I think we were able to keep our focus. We had three meetings. I think the third was kind of a surprise because we decided we better really get together a third time and get it right from our point of view. So, that's what we're recommending. And I just want to credit Susan Westman. She's the one who said, look, we've got a newsletter, let's use it to provide information as objectively as possible. And I think that's where the origin of that suggestion came from, and she was very helpful. So, happy to answer any questions. I would say that the, our meetings were also attended by members of the public, which was nice, including three or four, five, six, seven mayors would show up at each time. So, it was kind of fun.
Steve, would you go into how the committee addressed the cost issue of going through this process?
When you say the cost issue, I think we felt that to make an extensive commitment of upfront costs now, kind of telegraphs that decisions have been made that you're going to go forward with the whole project or things like that. And I know that was something that irritated lots of folks who addressed us, and some people were maybe in favor of one or two elements of the project, not the whole thing. So, we thought we should try to keep things focused, and when you say cost, you know, there are a lot of things that could be done at this point to evaluate the site, for its carrying capacity, engineering studies, all those kinds of things. They're very expensive. But before you undertake to do that, let's really take a pulse of the community and get reliable information out. And then, people are going to make up their own minds. And to the earlier point, Councilmember Tumini, the idea of the mail survey is that it's harder to mess with it, you're going to get a pretty reliable response, and I think there's a lot of concern in the community about elements of the project, pro and con, and I think you're going to get a pretty good response. So, you can, you can see how many people responded and what their views are. The devil will be in the detail of the questions, and that's why the committee felt we could continue to try to help to get questions out there that don't foretell an answer or push a person to one view or another, but to really try to be as objective as possible.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Jerry Clark, one of the four former mayors that was at all three ad hoc committee meetings. Fortunately, the city manager has built in three kill switches. The time to pull a kill switch is sooner than later. As you remember, last year, you attempted to have a small increase in the TOT tax, which would have cost no citizen one cent, just businesses. But now, you're looking at a $20 to $50 million project that if any part of it fails, who's going to be responsible for paying the debt service on that? The citizens will. What's going to happen? And I've lived here for over 45 years. Ron's been here longer than that, and some of the others at least that long. You know, and the one absurd thing in the second meeting that we had, the ad hoc committee, your own person that you had as a consultant, after hearing the four mayors object to this, said, who in this room is under 40 years old? And only her assistant raised his hand. And she said, we need to look at a younger demographic. This is so fraught with errors that I can't believe it. Even you, Dennis, said, well, to save money, let's have green waste hang tags with the surveys on them on the garbage cans. I mean, there are so many absurdities in this whole thing. It will be forced to an election if the kill switch isn't pulled at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. See, any other member of the public who'd like to address this issue?
You need the exercise.
I do. Ron Graves, and no ethics violation on this, even though I live within 500 feet of it, because I'm no longer involved with the city. So, that's kind of a neat thing to say for the first time. And I have a different take on it than Jerry Clark. I think that you should approve this proposal tonight so that the public does really become informed. Because I attended most of the general plan meetings, this was never as specific as this proposal is, and yet, the verbiage would lead you to believe that the city manager's right. But I've never heard one person in Capitola, other than Dennis, say that we need a new City Hall complex and we need to move the police and fire out of a floodplain zone. As you noticed tonight, nobody has involved the fire department in this, and they are directly across the street. So, I think there's a lot of unanswered things. I don't think we need to spend a lot of money. But at the first meeting of this ad hoc committee, a consultant was brought by Jeremy to the meeting, and the cost of that consultant to do just what this committee has done would have been three times what it's going to cost you to do a mailer and a public outreach as suggested in the proposal tonight. I think we should go ahead with it and hear what the public has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, we will return to council for discussion. Michael?
You know, my whole focus on this was not to necessarily consider a new City Hall, a new, you know, complex, a new parking structure, or a hotel. My whole object was to get a subcommittee together, and I didn't care who appointed them, the mayor's just as good a person as any, to give us a process that we could use not just for something like this, but for any public idea that we have up here. Because we've always been deficient in our public outreach. We've always been deficient in being able to draw the people in to get some ideas. I like the mailer idea. The, if you can go back a few slides, I think you had some public meetings as well, facilitated outreach meetings. I, this is, except for all of the focus on this particular project, this is what I was looking for. I was looking for something that we could use as a template and that we could bring to the people for anything. I believe that at this stage, now that this has been laid out before us, we could certainly use the mayor's select committee, but I think that it needs to have some members added to it. I would recommend that the other four council members each appoint someone to it. And this is more to diffuse the idea that this is all our mayor's idea, and, you know, he's pushing an agenda. There's a, there's a good selection of people up there, good citizens, we all respect them, good, good minds. I think just to show that there's more than just one person handpicking a committee, we should flesh it out a little more and go forward, as Ron said, with the mailer, with public outreach, and see how this process works with this very ambitious idea. public outreach, and see how this process works with this very ambitious idea, which has many pieces, any one of which may be good or all may be bad. The kill switches along the path, you know, have to be embraced because the one thing that we are also deficient in is knowing when to stop. I don't need to say the word Rispin too many times, but we have to learn to know when to stop something. You know, this may be a very good idea in some form, or some small slice of it may be a good idea, but we have to be able to look at it, step back and go, "This is over now." Not good. So, I like the report. I like what came out of it. I'm trying to divorce the project we're talking about from what we asked the Subcommittee to do. If we do go forward with this, as the councils will, I think we should make the committee larger, and it should be by an appointment from each of the other councilmembers to this committee. Thank you.
So, when I decided to run for City Council, one of the things that was important to me, if you remember my election statement, was to involve the public in decisions, have a, create a mechanism so that that could happen. I hear so often that we have meetings and no one comes. And when I campaigned and knocked on a lot of people's doors, as everyone on this dais has done, one of the things I heard is that, "I don't know what's going on in the city. I'm not involved in things. I hear about things afterwards." And so many people feel disenfranchised from their city. And one reason why I like Capitola is this is, to me, a place where you can get involved in decisions. It's not perfect, but we do need a mechanism to reach out and be more effective in doing that so that people do know ahead of time and do know they have a chance to participate in a meaningful way. So, I do support this. It could be the blueprint. Maybe it's the start of our efforts to be more effective in creating what someone just earlier said, a more effective direct democracy process involving people in its own government. I do like that last suggestion about broadening the committee out. I certainly would like to appoint some myself, and probably everyone up here would like to do that. I think your reason for saying that is a good one. So, at this point, I'm definitely for it.
Thank you. Stephanie?
I'm not sure if we need to appoint people to committee because I think it's short-lived. I think they're just willing to continue to help formulate questions or maybe part of just the immediate process, I think. Unless, I mean, certainly if they're going to continue, we could, should talk about that. But I just want to thank the committee, thank all the people that served on that committee, and that was great, great. I think it's a great report, a great way to go.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with your sentiment, Stephanie. The most important thing that I have to say here is I want to thank the committee for the work they did. What this is about, which was mentioned already, Councilman Tremini mentioned, this is about engaging the public. I think our role up here is to try to figure out ways to have the city move forward, to be independent, to be financially independent. And when ideas are brought to us, I think it's remiss if we don't at least take a look at them. And that's all my challenge to this ad hoc committee was, was let's take a look at this and see if it makes sense, you know? And I want to, as I can again say how much I'm happy with the effort they made, the suggestions they made. I'm looking forward to the process. Whether we make an appointment, as Stephanie said, I don't have a buy-in on that. I think the process was, these were six, six or seven neutral people that I think represent a good cross-section of the city. They've given good direction. I look forward to this. I look forward to the process. I look forward to the participating. And when the citizens of Capitola give us direction, we're going to listen to it. Thanks.
If we want to put more responsibility on this committee, I don't have any problem with adding members to it. But I will tell you that trying to keep this as non-political as possible and keep it out of the direction that the city's making this project, that the best way to do it is to bring members of the community in here, hopefully in a neutral world, and discuss this. And what we brought this committee together to do was to formulate a process that involved the public. What we came up with is exactly that, but believe me, it's not, the answers aren't here really how the process works. In other words, we're going to have a lot of questions in between of the best way to deal with this process. And it shouldn't be made by staff or it shouldn't be made by this council. It should be really formulated by someone from the outside. And so, I would propose that we keep the committee intact, and if you want to add one member from each councilmember, just don't make this a political arena. Let's make this a process where it comes out of the community, and that we can do that. But I think we need to define what the role is, and the role so far has been to give the city a process that will discuss as a community of these issues. And I think we have to stay with that process. And again, we have a lot of questions to answer before we get through it. Their suggestions are good. We need to formulate a plan, and we will at some point, may need a consultant in this process. But that decision needs to be made either by this council or by, with help with this committee or with staff on this. So, it's not defined as clearly as it should be at this point. And I want to thank the members of this committee. I also want to thank all the community members that showed up at that meeting too, because we did open that floor, that discussion with everyone. And so, we got good input across the board. Sure, we weren't all in agreement, but we did agree that there, as a whole, that there needs to be a process within this community that can discuss this issue in a public room. And the biggest thing we have to overcome is the education process. Really, how do you inform the public of all these issues and the repercussions on all ends? And we will probably develop, step into areas where we'll need money or consultants if we decide to move on. And yes, there is a plug at every corner that we can pull to stop this process if we decide to do it. So, I'm open for a motion from councilors.
I'd like to make a motion that, and did Mr. City Manager, was this a Brown Act committee because it had a sunset or because it didn't have a sunset, or was it just an ad hoc committee?
It was an ad hoc committee, so it was not Brown Act. That being said, the meetings were publicly noticed and were open to the public.
I think it's important to make this committee a Brown Act committee. I believe it should not have a sunset and that its official title not speak to this particular project because I don't know, really know where I stand on this project, but Public Outreach Committee, what have you. While, you know, some of the members up there are probably people that I would want to appoint myself, I know that there was a lot of negative talk about it all being our mayor's decision as far as the members. So, on that basis alone, I'd like my motion to include four more members of this committee at the choice of the council. I mean, if the councilmember chooses not to appoint someone, all well and good, but I know there's at least four other members, and it wouldn't be too large a committee having them, have it be a standing committee and have it be a Brown Act committee. And that is my motion.
Second.
Did you follow that one? Jamie?
I did, but can I make one comment is that the membership of this committee right now was conscripted. They didn't volunteer for these positions, and they were told that they would be serving for a month or two to help the city develop an outreach plan. So, if you want to form a standing outreach committee, my recommendation would be that's probably a little bit different from what we're doing tonight. And I think we'd have to have a conversation with this group-
That's come back with that meeting.
-whether they want that role, because I think that that's a little bit different than what we're talking about here tonight.
I didn't realize we sent a police cruiser to pick people up at their homes, but that's okay. The word conscription was, you know, okay.
Let's talk about it at another meeting because there may be, you know, some things we want to talk about with forming the committee and what we would like them to do, what we should talk about separately.
Then let me withdraw that motion, and I believe the only action you're looking for is receiving this report, correct?
And the newsletter. Whether it's an individual, separate newsletter, was that part of the direction?
You know, I haven't heard any councilmembers' thoughts on that. I don't think that that's a matter of really paramount importance, but I would appreciate guidance in that regard.
Then, you know, I will leave that out of my motion and just a motion to receive the report. And as an aside, say that the insert to the newsletter is probably the best idea at this point, since we'll be following it up with a mail-in survey.
I would say a second newsletter would be better, separate one for city news and then the next month one on this project. People, they just need to focus on this. If they got two things, I don't think that would be a good idea. We have a lot of news that needs to go out too, and-
I was just trying to save money. That was the only reason I-
It's not that much. It's not that much.
What does the newsletter cost us to put out?
$3,500.
It's about $3,500.
Okay.
The insert probably makes, you know, the delta is probably $2,000, $2,500 between an insert and a separate newsletter. I think, I support Stephanie Harland's suggestion on that. I think that it could turn into a pretty voluminous document, and you may end up losing sort of both messages.
I would better have a separate newsletter, from my own personal opinion.
Okay, then, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. We got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is the motion clear?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And in addition to that, will we be bringing back formation of the Public Outreach Standing Committee?
Discussion of it.
We can do that. For a separate, for a future agenda?
That'll give us time to poll the existing members, whether they feel like they want to continue with this. I will add that three of the people that were in the audience who ventured through all three of these and ex-mayors all personally came to me and told me that they were real happy with the selection of this committee and they thought it was real fair in the process. So, I will say that we have, the people who showed up showed good public support for the committee that we have for this. Thank you. Okay, Cory, I think you're up. Master Plan for Monterey Bay Scenic Sanctuary Trail Network?
Actually, I'm going to start the presentation.
Oh, Steve, thank you.
Yes. So, we're here to discuss the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail Master Plan. As an overview, the trail network is a pedestrian bikeway project along the coast. Ultimately, it'll connect with the trails in Monterey County and includes plans for amenities such as signs, beach benches, and fencing. The 32-mile coast rail trail is the spine of this network. It runs from Davenport to Paharo, almost through the entire county from north to south. And it provides the main thoroughfare, of which then there are services or trails that will lead off of that to go to different areas and different points of interest along the coast. The rail trail is proposed to have train service and a separated bike and pedestrian pass. The entire Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail Network is 50 miles. That includes 18 miles of these designated pathways connecting the rail line to key locations. Some of the key destinations include 44 schools, 92 parks. Approximately half the population of the county lives within a mile of the tracks. The Regional Transportation Commission has a 10-year goal to build significant sections of the trail network. So, looking at a map of the trail network, it comprises 20 segments, starting in the northern part. The first four, 1, 2, 3, and 4, are all beyond the rail trail. The rail trail itself starts in segment 5, which is from Davenport to Wilder Ranch. So, 1 through 4 are trails through a lot of its privately-owned agricultural land or state parks. And so, it's a mixture of bike lanes along the freeway and other trails and hiking trails in that area. Starting at Davenport, what it proposes is to have, use the rail trail and adjoining connections to that. You can see that in the central reaches where Capitola is included, and then the southern reaches down in Watsonville. So, looking at the two segments that are in the city of Capitola, the first one is segment 10, which goes from Live Oak to Capitola, from the Simpkins Swim Center to Jade Street Park. And the part that's in Capitola here is actually from 41st, which is about where my cursor is now, to Jade Street Park. And this is, would be an interesting and very popular connection once we get, when it gets built. One of the issues with this part of the trail is it actually does require relocating the tracks over to one side so that there's enough room to put the trail in there. That alone, removing the trail, the tracks in that section cost $1 million, and I'm going to have more cost information coming up. So, segment 11, I have it in two parts here. This is the main part through the village. Here's Jade Street Park, and it goes up through Park Avenue. So, it really includes, because of the rail bridge, that Soquel Creek, that is a significant hurdle to clear as far as getting pedestrians across it, the plan really calls for people to offload from the rail trail at this point and then go through the village. You can see the planning does include trails that go down to the coast and identifies, you know, these are all identified as sidewalks, and then it connects back up with the rail trail up here at Monterey Avenue. The RTC has given the city $250,000 of a $300,000 project to build a connection to the rail trail from the upper beach and village parking lot. That's under design right now and hopes to be built this summer. Anything else on this? No. And then, looking at the remaining part of segment 11, really runs along Park Avenue, along the rail trail here. And interestingly enough, this is where McGregor Park is, so ultimately, it may be possible to get a connection from, to McGregor Park from the rail trail down into Aptos. And notice that the plan does include identifying scenic trails along the coast here too. So, it's kind of a combination, like we said before, that the rail trail is the spine and all these other connections to it where people can actually get down to the coast or identified also. So, segment 11, just to give you an idea of the cross-section here, you know, the rail trail, you have a fence. Everywhere we have an interaction between pedestrians, bicycles, and a rail trail, fencing is required and a certain amount of separation. So, that's kind of a typical segment through the Capitola. So, Master Plan is a guiding document. The RTC adopted the plan and EIR after two and a half years of an engagement process. It defines goals, trail alignment, and design features, and provides cost estimates, operation and maintenance scenarios, implementation and prioritization. And this plan has been adopted by the county and the cities of Santa Cruz and Watsonville. Santa Cruz adopted it just two weeks ago. So, looking, just to give you an idea of the cost we're looking at for the entire network, and I won't go into the details here, but it's a $127 million project to implement both the coastal rail trail and the coastal trail of Spurs. And looking just at segments 10 and 11, again, this does include work in both Live Oak and Aptos, but it's not broken out. So, it's including the total cost for segments 10 and 11 is $18.5 million. Interesting thing to note here is that does not include working on the bridge over Soquel Creek. It is considered a rail bridge at this point, and when it gets rebuilt for rail purposes, it will include, proposed to include the pedestrian and bike pass here. This plan really only addresses what we're putting in for pedestrian bike facilities. All the other bridges that are included in these segments are pedestrian bridges similar to what we have over Soquel Creek at Rispin-Carry that will address pedestrian issues. That kind of bridge won't work at Soquel, so that, these costs don't include redoing the bridge at Soquel Creek. Just wanted to be clear on that. So, what's next? The RTC is working to seek funding for implementation and maintenance. They have a already awarded $5.6 million available Congressman Carr, Farr, and the RTC did. Those funded, I think, four different segments, including the segment of, or the connection we have in Capitola. RTC is continually seeking partners and other funding opportunities. Big effort needs to go to finalizing the design of individual segments. There's obviously pathway constraints that we're going to have to overcome in how to deal with the bridge structures until a time that they can get rebuilt. And we're also looking to develop agreements, MOUs for trail maintenance, cost sharing, future adopted trail or volunteer programs. So, I'd just like to recognize the Santa Cruz Regional Transportation Commission. They've done an outstanding job. They were the lead on this project. They're the ones that purchased the rail corridor that gave us this opportunity. George Stondero is their executive director, and Cory Coletti, who's in the audience tonight and is available to answer any questions. So, the recommendation tonight is to approve the resolution for adopting the master plan. Any questions?
Michael?
Steve, and perhaps you, Mr. Mayor, what is the status of the RTC's latest and greatest rail feasibility study?
I'll answer that. It will be available to the public in June, so it hasn't been released at this time.
Are we at all premature in this, seeing that that study will tell us or should tell us more definitively the compatibility and the wisdom of maintaining rail service on the corridor?
Cory, you may be able to address that a little better, but I think the rail, the trails that are identified here, this is real with a trail plan. And, you know, right now, if the tracks were to go away, if they were found feasible to do something, I think the trail network would still remain the same. do something, I think the trail network would still remain the same. The design standards may change a little, but those would be easy to adapt. So, you know, my recommendation is we adopt this. Now, the rail study may have a minor impact on this.
And I think that it's significant to note that this project clearly states that 60% of the cost will be soft, design, engineering, and management. 60% of what we build as the government is not tangible. So internalize that, digest it.
Questions, Steph?
Unless she wants to make a presentation first?
Cory, I want to add something here, Cory. You and I-
I'm just available for questions. I don't have a presentation, I have a couple of comments, but I'm mostly here available for your questions.
Well, thank you for coming to Capitola tonight. And I want to know that, note that you and I have been working on this project for 14 years. You were just a kid when we started. Cory?
I still have.
Your forum.
I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Did you want to make any comments first? Okay. There was some information that was discussed in the past about the Surface Transportation Board and whether an adverse abandonment of the entire spur was done. Was that done so that we can talk about the, using it for passenger, I mean, for pedestrians and bike way? Are you familiar with that issue?
Yes. All current plans and policy decisions and directives are for the rail corridor to be explored for passenger rail service and an adjacent rail with trail project. So no abandonment of the rail line discussion has been pursued and everything that, all the pertinent decisions by the Regional Transportation Commission is to move ahead with this dual-use plan.
The information that was being discussed, I guess, a couple of years ago was that the Surface Transportation Board in Washington DC has jurisdiction over this line?
I believe so, yes.
So their information at the time was that there wasn't enough required space, 15 feet on each side of the rail bed for a hike and bike trail?
We have done-
In some parts, some parts there is, but a lot of parts there isn't.
We've done an extensive analysis through this master plan. There are many, many guesses along the way in terms of what was feasible or what could be feasible and what could not be feasible. Part of the reason why the extensive master plan process was so that the entire rail line would be evaluated for, you know, the feasibility of having these two uses. And as Steve Jesperk pointed out, it was identified that for a stretch through Live Oak, the track would have to be relocated to the other side, to one side or another in order to accommodate both, because you need to have a 10-foot setback from the center line of the track to where the trail, where the trail's fencing is. So in essence, there is enough space and the master plan basically lays out how to do that. There are a couple of other minor constrained areas, but we were fortunate in that those areas are adjacent to another public holding like Caltrans, for instance, in the north coast.
But, I mean, there's a whole lot of area in Live Oak where there's just not that space, because there's homes and businesses along that side.
There's nowhere along the Live Oak corridor or along the Capitola corridor that's under 40 feet wide. Now, people have encroached on it with fences, but every one of those areas, besides the bridges, everyone is, everyone in Capitola, I know for a fact, is over 40 feet wide.
It's in the 35 to 40-foot range, and there are a lot of encroachments, unfortunately.
Is that in the budget at all to get easements from people?
It's not in the budget to get easements, because it's not, there aren't easements. It's our right-of-way, so people are encroaching. So technically, I mean, there are going to be difficulties when these more constrained segments are going to be developed. There's no, no way around that. And, you know, one of the reasons why, as Councilmember Termini pointed out, these soft costs, I like to call them support costs, because it's all the planning and the permitting and the engineering are really part of all public works projects. But a lot of those things are determined by the extensive technical detail that is involved and the public input and the working out difficult issues with the neighboring communities. And that might involve adjacency to the trail as well as other amenities, lighting and, you know, things like that, different things that some community members may want, others may not. So it's all part of, you know, bringing this kind of project to the community, and the public process is costly.
My question is, with so much of it that has been encroached upon, are we going to have to put millions and millions of dollars into a legal fund to try to get those encroached areas removed? You're going to have to sue people, you're going to have to take them to court, you're going to, I mean, that's, I mean, those are the comments that people have asked me about, they're going to say, "How in the world would you do this?" When there is so, they've walked along there, walked their dogs along there, and they see these areas where there's simply, it is simply so narrow that they say, "What are you going to do?" And so I'm just asking.
Yeah, and those are very fair questions. And this is a master plan, this is a high-altitude plan, it's not a project-specific plan. It's very clear that each segment, as it comes to construction, as it's funded, will have to have its own independent process, and we will have to look at the, you know, specific issues that we'll have to address.
Well, I guess just one last question about, about the Surface Transportation Board and whether they're going to be involved, because the question was asked to them whether this project was even feasible, and they said, "No." They said there isn't the, the information that they gave at the time a couple of years ago, was that their, that their, the bed doesn't have the required room for a bike hill, bike, hike, trail. And it would have to be, first be, there would first have to be an abandonment of the spur, which could only happen if all the businesses agreed to stop getting shipments by rail. Providing for those businesses' needs was the purpose of the federal government, the purpose, was the purpose, the federal government built the spur. So I'm not sure where, you know, if they've, what kind of involvement they're going to have, or whether, you know, what that is.
They regulate freight service, and there's involvement with the Service Transportation Board, as I indicated subsequent to a few years ago. Much analysis has been done about what is feasible for the rail line.
Okay, Cory. A couple of questions, let's get home here on Capitola for a second. I know that the present trail is being developed in, through Santa Cruz right now, I think through the boardwalk, is that correct? And then on, also on the Watsonville end, they're doing it through the SLU area, is that correct?
Through the SLU, yeah. From Lille Road to the entrance to the SLU system, yes.
Okay, those are the two areas that have been financed first in this, in this overall plan. We're, Capitola kind of sit in the middle of this thing, and I know that this is not a cheap segment for, for it to do. What can, how can the city get involved in encouraging us to be one of the, one of the next segments to go? And obviously, the connection that we would really like to see as a community would be between Capitola and, let's say, downtown Santa Cruz. Is that, is that, is there discussion going on right now?
We're talking about Live Oak, that's why I bring up Live Oak. How are you going to get there, you know?
Well, I've walked that whole corridor, and I don't see any place that's going to be a problem. There are places that are over bridges and stuff, there are pavements, but again, we just purchased 32-mile, 32-mile lineal park, and there's going to be problems along the way, and they have to be overcome. And that's what this document did. It led the charge and how these things can become. Is it answering everything? No, it doesn't answer everything. But the process will, you know, somehow we have, somehow we need to do this. I can't, I don't think there's a person, this community that I've talked to that's against doing this rail trail. And so, we'll find answers. But my point, my point is, is what can Capitola do as a community to move ourselves up in the process and encourage us to be one of the next segments to be done?
Yeah, I think that that's a really great questions, question. People are really interested in seeing this project be delivered sooner rather than later. We get a lot of pressure internally. I think that one of, that one of the things that the city of Capitola can do is to really work on the private-public partnerships. It all comes down to funding. One of the reasons why we have partnered with the Land Trust of Santa Cruz and Friends of the Rail Trail Ecology Action is because they've been doing private fundraising, and that is being provided as matches to these government funds that we are able to secure. So moving forward, what we really need is these partnerships of various sorts with state parks, for instance. We applied for a grant for a north coast segment most recently. State Park came on board as a funding partner through, through providing some labor, and the Land Trust of Santa Cruz committed millions of dollars as a match should we get that grant. So I think pursuing those kind of things, and also the RTC is looking at bringing ballot measure to the 2016, to 2016 voters for transportation projects. There are a lot of deferred needs, as you all know, and also, to be able to fund a project like this, we would need new revenue streams. I do have to say that we are so very appreciative of all the local jurisdiction support of this master plan. We've received three planning awards from state parks, from the American Planning Association and the American Environmental Professionals Association. So it's been recognized as a solid planning document, and it's really encouraging that all the local jurisdictions have considered adoption and all have adopted with your consideration tonight.
There's a couple of segments in Capitola or different areas that, that are providing somewhat on their own trails, providing access to the rail trail, and also, an example would be Coronado Street going down and from Cliffwood Heights that comes into the rail trail. And we have not been able to put a trail down to the rail trail because of the fact that, that there's, the owner of, or the RTC does not allow people to do rail crossings, and I guess there's something with railroad that also allows that. All of a sudden, we have a corridor that's through our county that all of a sudden becomes this restrictive barrier for, for public access. Can you address, you know, can you address this? And will areas of that eventually be able to have crossings or be able to, to access a rail trail from there?
Yeah, it's, so neighborhood connectivity is a really important consideration, and unfortunately, we're limited by the Public Utilities Commission and the number of crossings that they allow. And for every new crossing, they require that you remove to existing crossings. So, you know, there's a lot of safety regulations when it comes to railroad movement, and there are restrictions associated with that. So there's that to balance versus maintaining neighborhood connectivity, allowing neighbors to access one of the, one side of the tracks to the other. So we're really trying to look at using the existing crossings as much as possible. It is really a lot safer, especially when you're going to have freight or passenger rail service to channelize those crossings. So it's a balancing game. It's possible to maintain some of the, you know, the informal crossings, but of course, that means sacrificing on other fronts.
The, as you approach the Antigua Apartments, as you're going down Park Avenue, there's a sliver of land there that's, all of a sudden, the rail corridor gets really wide in that area. It goes almost to, I don't know, maybe 500 feet wide. And what it is, is to the bluff line, where Union Pacific is owned that whole thing, and absolutely most scenic piece on the whole rail corridor is right there. Is there, can jurisdictions such as Capitola actually step forward and put a use to property like that, if it's on the corridor, if it's not within the trail?
A use separate from a trail, or?
Such as a park area or an observation area, a walking observation area. Can the city, can the city actually apply to the RTC and take over portions of the rail corridor?
Yeah, there are all sorts of different arrangements that can be pursued. It could even be part of a rail trail project. As Councilmember Harland knows, there's a lot of plans and hopes for interpretive signs, which basically mean coastal overview, overlook areas, and it could tie in very, very easily with a rail trail transportation project. But even, even independent of that, I think that the Regional Transportation Commission is very interested in maximizing uses of the rail corridor.
Thank you. Michael?
Do you perceive the, the bike and walking path part of the trail to be on the ocean side of the rail trail?
It jumps from one side to the other depending on what the right-of-way constraints are and what logical terminus issues exist on either end.
My concerns are that, as Dennis said, if the bike trail portion is on the ocean side of the rail, going through by the Antigua Apartments and going through most of Capitola, there are a limited number of places where a bicyclist can access the bicycle trail. And if they have to go to the closest crossing, you're going to train a lot of people on how to climb fences. I'm from New Jersey, I was born knowing how to climb fences.
We try to locate the trail on the coastal side as much as possible. We understand that people want to be along the coast. It's a balancing act between providing safety, providing access, dealing with right-of-way concerns, trying to minimize cost, because if there isn't space, then you'd have to relocate the tracks. So it's a balancing act. We did the best we could.
I understand. Just make a comment. Questions, Cory? Is there any other member of the public that would like to address this issue, please?
Gary Richard Arnold, mayor, councilman, and councilwoman. We see a lot of meeting, eating, and conferences. Be interesting to know how much money has actually been used on this. A lot of these land trusts are tax-exempt and don't pay any taxes whatsoever, and I think those certainly should be, certainly up for grabs. As far as getting endorsement from the Public Planning Association, they're the ones that endorse the one-way roads you see through Watsonville and Salinas and all these other cities that where you have to drive twice as far in order to park on one side of the street in order to get into a business. So having those type of credentials aren't great. But I think the worst part is ignoring the existing residents and having such an emphasis on the travelers traveling through. If you walk through the roads of some of the nicest areas of Capitola, you're walking through sand and gravel, it's like a Mexican road. And for those infrastructure, basic stuff being ignored for this Disneyland idea, I think is a wrong tact. And the fact that it, as the one gentleman said, you know, 60% of it's, you know, with the paperwork and the, and the other activities, it, this may be something better guided for a private-type event, but the fact that so many people meet with this transportation conference or group is really out of the public's eye, and I think they're, they're removed from their own constituency. When they get together, they're not thinking of the people that live in their streets and the kid that's walking across the street trying to bounce a ball on sand.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Norton, councilmembers. My name is Amelia Conlin. I'm the Director of Bike Santa Cruz County. As of Tuesday, we're the organization formerly known as People Power, and we advocate for better bicycling in Santa Cruz County. And I'm here to support adoption of the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail Master Plan. The Sanctuary Scenic Trail is our members' top priority project, and this project has the potential to transform our county by providing a safe place to walk and bike. The trail will connect Capitola with Aptos, with Watsonville, and with Santa Cruz, providing, making, riding a bike to work, to school, for your daily trips, a safer and more comfortable option. And when traffic is bad, who knows, it might even be faster. The trail will also be a significant draw for tourism and increased economic activity and improve the safety of the currently unused rail line. Adopting the master plan is a first step towards getting this project completed. Please adopt the plan today and continue to make it your top advocacy priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Amelia.
And I also want to pass along a couple of reports to each of the councilmembers. We've been working with the other bike organizations in the county to put together the State of Cycling Report, and this contains all of the, yeah, all of the work that different bike organizations are doing around the county with events, with education, with advocacy, new bike projects that have been completed. So hopefully, it has some useful statistics for you as you look at bike issues in Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you, Amelia.
Have a question?
You have a question, Amelia?
Go ahead. Cory? Oh, I'm sorry, Ron.
Go ahead up there if you want. Members of the council, my name is Ron Graves, and it was my pleasure, not only while I was on the council here and on the planning commission and on the metro board, to serve on the Regional Transportation Commission, when in fact- when in fact, we bought this railroad spur as a public agency. There was a lot of discussion at that time about the rail trail. I am happy to see that a master plan is coming forward. Some of you asked questions with regards to the live oak portion of it. And I know Dennis said he walked it. I can think of a couple incidences where we've done ourselves some harm since we've been in the power of being in control of that railroad corridor. The corridor is not exact. It's not always 40 feet wide from the center line of the rail. In fact, there's a lot of places where it doesn't exist indeed at all. Having said that, I can think of over at Bromer Street, adjacent to Seventh Avenue, probably about the 800 block of Bromer, there's Mobile Home Park. And one of the first actions that the Regional Transportation Commission did was to OK a boundary adjustment for that park for a couple of coaches that were in the railroad right-of-way. So what we did is restrict it even more after it was in public control. Another one was in downtown Santa Cruz, down by the boardwalk area, where in fact, the city of Santa Cruz had some designs on putting in some public, excuse me, I wanted to say utility, but public works area down there. And again, that was negotiated to the benefit of Santa Cruz, and I'm not sure it was to the benefit of the rail trail. I think all of us need to remember that when we bought the line and put it in public domain being the Regional Transportation Commission, there were some caveats on the money. The Regional Transportation, when I was last on there, which was just a few months ago, intended to obey those covenants, so to speak. And solely for 10 years, we'll have a rail and trail. The rail will not go away in that time for fear that the money may have to be returned. Having said that, I think tonight you should approve this. It's a major step in the right direction. And I'd like to address Stephanie's a little bit with the surface transportation. That came up mostly when we were buying the rail. And we were fighting with different operators for the rail. And I don't disagree with anything she said, but I don't think it's really pertinent. I think the most pertinent thing she said is that remember that this rail line is not a corridor that's complete. There are parts that have never been really procured by the previous railroads. It's kind of like been eminent domain, so to speak. They've had the tracks there, but they never bought the right-of-way on each side to make this train track complete. But we've been operating it for how many years? And we know that the trail will be there eventually. And I always thought in my lifetime, we may not see the entire trail. But I think we're starting to see fruition on the west side of Santa Cruz through Santa Cruz to the boardwalk. We've had lots of discussions at the regional transportation level with the Paharo area because of what some farmers needed to do in order to get their workers into the field and to realign down there. And I think that this is a proper step, first direction. Let's get this thing going and approve what has been placed before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Is there any other members of the public who'd like to address this? Rudy, could you come up here for a second, please? Thank you for being here with us. Would you address the issue of public safety along this corridor and what the vision is for our community and neighboring communities along the corridor?
It's just not in the corridor piece, but even in open space areas, it's very important to have visibility for not just law enforcement, but the general public. People feel safer in areas where they have visibility, whether it's assisted with lighting or a constant presence by community members or law enforcement. The visibility piece is very important. And so brush and those types of things that could block people's view, those are kind of areas where people might tend to gather who may not have the right thing in mind. And so when those open space areas are open and people can see from both ways, it's where the community becomes our eyes. And as they are driving by, if they see something suspicious and we're not there, if the area is open, then they can report it. So from a public safety standpoint, that's the importance of it.
And personally, the corridor itself does have some policing issues. Is that correct right now?
That is correct. There are some areas that might be overgrown or because of the logistics of the area, just not visible to the patrol staff as they're either walking by or driving by. So they have to move around in certain areas to get a better view.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll return to council discussion.
I'm going to bring up a concern that the county had that I also have. And we might want to do what the county did, which was just approve a resolution approving it. And their resolution says, "The master plan identifies significant issues associated with the plan's implementation and the trail's construction and maintenance that will require collaboration between the county and the RTC and more specific determinations by the county about what policies and improvements it desires to incorporate into its circulation element and cap improvement program. Whereas the Board of Supervisors seeks to work cooperatively with the RTC regarding the master plan and the concepts outlined therein, now there it be resolved that the Board affirms its commitment to work in partnership with the RTC to develop appropriate strategies to implement the concepts set forth." That's kind of where we are. I'm not really ready to adopt a plan, but, and in their staff member, they outline concerns that I've had also. It says, "A prudent process and timeline would allow for the identification of the details of expectations, commitments, responsibilities under the plan. Such a process will require a significant amount of inter-agency, inter-jurisdictional discussion and coordination. Pseudal process would also coordinate elements of the plan with other priorities and plans" and so forth. It's a guide for the future, but I'm not sure I want to adopt a plan right now. The whole thing about the train may go away, and we may want the trail to come right down into Capitola, because that's where we want the people. That's where we want them to walk, come and enjoy the beach, see the sanctuary and hear the sanctuary and smell the ocean, go to our restaurants and businesses, and move on and go down to the next spot where they're visiting. So you know, I think that we might want to massage this a little bit, and supporting it is great, but I don't know if we want to adopt it right now. We don't have a lot of details.
I think I just saw the map has everyone coming off.
It comes off.
Oh, I know. I mean, it does. I know. I mean, there's spurs and there's, you know, there's other trails and things like that.
If I could just provide clarification about the county's action. So what happened with the county of Santa Cruz is that initially, staff recommended that the Board of Supervisors adopt a resolution of support citing these concerns, that there are numerous concerns on everybody's part because there are a lot of negotiation of details that will have to be done. During that meeting, the Board of Supervisors ultimately decided and voted to support the master plan by adopting a resolution of adoption of the master plan. To be clear, adopting the master plan is really a show of support and endorsement. It doesn't obligate any local jurisdictions for anything, and it's not actually a prescriptive master plan. It's really, the Regional Transportation Commission asked local jurisdictions to adopt it in light of wanting that kind of public support and intra-jurisdictional support. The public workshops were attended by hundreds of people, and we really got that direction. So anyway, what happened with the county is that initially, the minutes didn't reflect that action correctly, and subsequently, the minutes and the resolution was reflected and is now in public record that the Board of Supervisors adopted the master plan.
Did they change this resolution?
Yes. And I can provide the citation to the meeting where the adopted, the minutes were corrected.
So there is another resolution?
Yes.
Just correcting that one. Okay. Thank you, Corey. Discussion?
Yeah, no, I just want to offer my support for the Scenic Trail Network Master Plan. I'm in support of it. I think that we are waiting for the results to come, of the results for the proposed train, how it's all going to work. But the plan itself is a guide for us to look at and to try to adhere to. Obviously, I believe it's a work in progress. It's something that we're shooting for. There's going to be all kinds of obstacles in the way with the encroachments, how we're going to make it work. But the benefit of this to Santa Cruz County is immeasurable. And I think we need to give it a chance. And I'm in favor of it, and we'll support it.
Thank you. Discussion?
I just have a question for you, Corey. I was trying to read this, and in many cases here, it says fencing will be considered when the project is implemented. I have read articles in the newspaper where some agricultural concerns need fences. So I'm just trying to understand how you're approaching fencing, going through cities and going through wild areas and going through agricultural areas.
Well, we're really going to address that segment by segment with community input. And when we get to the design level, we are proposing fencing through, for as much of the corridor as is deemed appropriate. There are some instances where you have a wide enough buffer that you don't need fencing because you have so much vegetation. So it's really going to be determined on a case-by-case segment. So that's why, you know, we divided the whole project into these segments so that, because each one has their individual considerations that will have to be determined. Safety is something that's really important for rail operations. So we addressed it as something, a feature that will be considered for each segment's design process.
Okay. I'm new to this process. What is the next steps? I just don't know this whole process. I appreciate knowing a little bit more about what is next anticipated.
Yeah, the next process is really to fund projects and then to go through the design environmental permitting process. And your public works department can, and public works director can speak in more detail to what the local process is.
So as we identify funding for segments, I kind of envision us doing some outreach and actually kind of laying out how the trail is going to physically connect at both ends and the middle and how it's going to function. So I think we need to probably sit down and break the segments within Capitola into workable segments. I mean, with the SoCal Creek Bridge, kind of in the middle of it all and not being able to go across that until that gets repaired, we have to figure out what are the logical implementation portions of the segment. And building a trail to the bridge now is probably not a good idea because we don't want pedestrians on the bridge as it is today. So we're going to have to work that out and then identify the funding that would be available.
What are some of our options for funding?
Right now, I'm really still leaning on the RTC to help me identify that funding. I mean, we have our own general fund, but as funding through the RTC becomes available that we apply for it and be ready to move on that.
So someone's going to be general fund in conjunction with?
Correct, yeah.
The master plan identifies the various funding options that are available. There's RSTP, Active Transportation Program, RSTP, TDA, Transportation Development Act. So there are a variety of different funding sources. The master plan contains a wealth of information. The average rail right-of-way width is 70 feet. You'll find that information in there. But like I said, also the funding sources that we may be able to tap into.
Well, the problem is, Jacques, that you're talking about now, is that if you look at our history of receiving STIP funds and other kinds of funds, it's been pretty small because we're a small jurisdiction. We're only two and a half square miles and only 10,000 people. So when we go out to vie for the funds, the big pot of money, we got other people that always get a lot more money. We get just a little bit. So if we're looking, that's why, another reason why I'm hesitant to approve this plan. We get so little, and we're looking at something so expensive, really, 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 really. Is this a feasible plan for Capitola? And if it's not, I mean, as Steve said, you know, we're going to build a trail to, you know, something that we're not going to fix for ever, maybe? Maybe we will. You know, fixing the bridge across there. So you know, that's why I'm just a little hesitant to approve something. This is the plan, you know, as if we're going to, I know it's a work in progress, but I think, I'm a little more comfortable with what the county's doing, which is saying, "We support it. We're going to work with you. We're going to do every week, thing we can to implement this, but we're not really ready to approve it right now. Let's wait and see. Maybe down the line, we can do that."
I think Corey just told you that that's not what the county said.
Right.
Is that right? You know, that's what she said. I mean, okay, so the county did approve the trail?
Yeah, I mean, I was told something, I was told that they didn't.
Okay, well.
The initial staff report asked for adoption of support. The concluding vote was adoption of the master plan.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more question, Corey. We're not a standalone, so in a sense, when we're asking for funding, the agencies that we're approaching probably consider the fact that this is an overall project.
Yes, of course.
Does that make sense?
Yes. And gaps in the entire network are very important, and there are a lot of different considerations. This is a very highly densely populated area that speaks volumes for any kind of grant funding source.
So addressing Steph's question, the fact that we are part of an overall system would make it probably more likely that we would get funding.
Look at our history of receiving STIP funds.
There, it's hard for me to indicate how likely any kind of funding application is. It depends on how well it's written, on how it's, how well it's matched to the funding source. Different kind of funding sources look for different things. Recreational trails, projects, look for, you know, recreation-serving activities. Transportation, active transportation program looks for, you know, transportation, journey-to-work kind of trips. So it's, you have to start someplace. And you start with a plan, a vision, an analysis. And we did that, and now we're at the point of looking at specific segments. What are we going to target? How are we going to fund the money? How are we going to get public support? We're trying to go through it sequentially as is done in the planning arena.
Thank you.
Michael, chime in?
I have a question.
Stephanie?
You're going to do anything with the sanctuary to promote the sanctuary? Because these monies were received for the sanctuary, and so we should do an interpretive plan. And I know that the county committee would love to work with you to try to seek some grants to work on getting the jurisdictions to do some sanctuary interpretation. So there needs to be a coordinated effort, I think, between the jurisdictions and the sanctuary to do that. Because that, you know, you have to, it has to be part of the plan. If you're going to use the name of the sanctuary, you have to have an interpretive plan to do that. And I think that that should be part of this plan.
It's addressed as part of the plan, and I can provide reference pages if you would like. It also references the excellent standards manual that was developed. And it really is, the master plan intends to utilize that planning effort. It was a very comprehensive planning effort, so interpretive signs, wayfinding signs are addressed in the plan and by reference to the previously completed plan.
Thank you, Corey. You know, this community was created by that red corridor. That red corridor is a very significant piece of land within this community. And along the corridor, we provide the most scenic views probably of anywhere along the coastline. We're the main beneficiary. We're a tourist industry. The possibility of bringing tourists in by bicycle or light rail, whatever the issues become, is Capitola's a winner in this thing. We're right in the heart of the whole corridor. There was a deal made when this corridor came through the first time on the north coast when they were trying to do the north coast segment, and we found that deed of property, and I think Ron brought this up, some of it was really clouded. One, in fact, some of them were, there was pieces of property where the railroad went was traded for three pigs and a cow to get that corridor. And that title stayed like that. So what happened was, is the only reason that we have rights to it is the fact that there is a live rail line on that. And so that's why it's there, and that's why it'll stay there. But we, as a community, are main beneficiaries. This is the most significant land purchase in the history of this county. And it's also, with the exception of our beaches, the most important land purchase, land owned by the community. So we win in this one all the way along. And Capitola, as short as our corridor is, is significant in this whole, in this whole plan. I just, I'd like to see the city really move forward and start pushing for us to get our segment as one of the next ones that come through. And we will do that, Corey.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail Network Master Plan.
I'll second that.
Got a motion to second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Thank you, council members and Mayor Norton.
Thank you.
Thanks, Corey. Thanks for coming.
Okay, we move to item 10C, authorize the police department to purchase a digital car and body camera video system in the amount of 100,500. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Rudy Escalante, your chief of police. What you have in front of you tonight is a proposal to authorize the police department to purchase a digital in-car and body camera video system in the amount of $100,000 from WatchGuard Digital Video Systems. And we'll be amending the fiscal year 2014, 2015 state supplemental law enforcement services budget and to authorize additional expenditures for the same amount of $100,501.31 from the unassigned fund balance. So as you know, over the last couple of years, the, there's been a large push nationwide by the law enforcement community to use body camera systems. It's been since about 2005, since the Capitola Police Department has had any type of audio-video system within their capabilities on their vehicles. In fact, the last systems were used, VHS tapes were actually used. And so since that time, because of costs and the equipment was not functioning at the time, we've no longer had them. So for the last 10 years, we've been without any type of audio-video recording system mounted on our vehicles or our motorcycles. For the last couple of years, law enforcement has tried to continually push this product of body worn cameras. In fact, recently Assemblyman Alahoe had AB-65 that was approved with the support of the California Police Chiefs Association where it made out of the Public Safety Committee to move on further in the process and hopefully of assisting county or city law enforcement agencies in the state to help purchase body cameras. The purpose of body cameras helps identify and create transparency within the community and the police department. It also helps identify those good practices that the officers are involved in and also gives us good training opportunities. But it really collects a lot more additional evidence that we can support in a particular case. There are a lot of products out there, there's a lot of opportunities and a lot of vendors to look at products. What we did was about eight months ago, we engaged our officers in the bargaining unit and asked for their thoughts about what they thought about body cameras. We were trying to look at the best way and best practices that other agencies were doing, some of the successes and their failures and when they were trying to adopt the digital camera system. As you know, digital equipment changes quite frequently, very rapidly moving, and therefore there are a lot of positives and challenges that people have incurred. And so we developed a plan with our officers and there was a volunteer of groups where they wanted to go out and explore other vendors and other agencies to see what was working for other agencies before we made any type of a commitment. Sergeant Mark Gonzalez is here tonight. He's our technical supervisor as far as, when it comes to the technical equipment and helped oversee the process of meeting with vendors, attending demonstrations, going to other agencies and talking to the line staff and to the managers, trying to find the best product that would be the best fit for us. Obtaining that additional video and audio evidence is extremely crucial at many different levels, whether it's in a criminal case or whether it is in a civil case. If there's some sort of civil action or some sort of accident that may have occurred, we can then capture that information and evaluate it and put it into more best practices. In 2009, the state legislator adopted the supplemental law enforcement services fund and these revenues are used to fund a variety of law enforcement programs. It's previously paid and it's out of the general fund from the state. It comes to us with specific purposes as to what we can use it for, what we can't use it for. And so for the last year and a half, two years, we've been saving our money so that we can actually purchase a program and also if there's any warranty issues or additional equipment issues that we may need as we go through the installation process, we would have additional money to cover any of those additional costs. And so we've looked at several vendors and the one that we would recommend is what we call WatchGuard Video. And it's a digital video system. They are rated number one in the world or at least around the country. And I put up on display a couple of pictures because I wanted to give you an idea the, how clear the picture is and what it would look like. If you look at this particular picture, this is from the body camera that would be mounted on the front of the officer. It's about one and a half inches wide by about two inches long and it just goes on the front sleeve of the officer. And it would actually, it could be operated by the officer by just pressing a button. There are concerns about the officer safety piece of it. If an officer has to get out of a car fairly quickly, the last thing we want to do, whether they're defending themselves or going to protect somebody else's life, I don't want them stopping and thinking about putting, you know, starting the camera. And so we're trying to address those concerns through the product vendor so that as time goes on, we want to Bluetooth connect those capabilities so that they would actually come on. And the nice thing about the WatchGuard Video System, it has record after the fact. And so we can actually go back so before the button was pushed, if it was inadvertently not pushed, then we could still capture that information and that is extremely critical. The next picture, actually, if you go back one, it'll show what the video looks like from a car stop situation, which is that particular picture. No, the other one where the driver is being talked to. If the officer had that on the front part of their shirt, that would be the video that they get. And the advantage of that is we would obviously tell the person that they're being videotaped when we stop and talk to them. This is very important, especially if there's any question as to what might have been relative to the stop, what might have led to probable cause. You actually have on-view information that you would see when you walk up to that car stop. And so you want to be able to make sure you capture all of that. The next picture. This is what the equipment looks like. The small camera on the left actually gets mounted just near the rearview mirror on the window. It actually is capable of getting 180-degree view. So it captures quite a bit of information. The nice piece about it is when we download the information, we go to record it, it actually goes to HD, high definition. It gives us even, even better picture of what we would actually see. The screen on the right is what gets mounted in the car. You can see the body camera piece which is up to the left and the below is the smaller piece that is part of the recording device. Next picture, please. This is what the front view would actually look like, although the new system that we're looking at, it has 180 degrees, but you can see the clarity of it. It's very important. We've had several cases where we've stopped somebody and either they've discarded evidence out of the car. There's been swerving movements that have been relative to the probable cause for stopping a car. And now we'd be able to capture that evidence and that's all extremely critical. Passenger gets out of that car and takes off running during the middle of the car stop, you actually have some good video evidence to maybe hopes of identifying that person and capturing that information and getting that out to other law enforcement agencies, especially if that person is an armed and dangerous person. Next picture. This is from a accident scene that occurred in a parking garage and you can see that the view of the people involved is extremely critical, especially if it comes to injuries so that you can document them appropriately or any type of level of intoxication. Somebody's balance is unstable, if their speech is slurred. Right now, we just document that and report based on our observations. Here, we would have video evidence to substantiate why a stop was made or why a further detention was required. Next picture. So the benefits, in talking to several agencies that have already obtained body cameras, they're trying to integrate the body cameras into their current car camera system. One of the advantages for waiting like we did is now we would have the same company with the same system. And so it's easy to integrate that, especially when the officer leaves the car. So it enhances our opportunities to capture evidence, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation. Those are critical pieces that we could use. And to assist in controlling antisocial behavior. That is also critical, especially when you're letting people know that the reason why we stopped you and also the fact that they're being recorded. And provide impartial and accurate evidence collection with citizen complaints. Gives us an opportunity to work through those complaints with the public as quickly as possible. And then we have some identifiable information through the video, which is critical. It would give greater insight into service delivery and identifying good practice and increase our customer service and training capabilities. Obviously, if equipment isn't working or we have a training issue, we can actually identify those more quickly and then we can address them quickly. I want to give you some information on a study that was done by the Rialto Police Department in 2011 and 2012. They had no cameras and they had 59 use-of-force incidents and 24 officer complaints. Much bigger department, obviously, but it goes into why camera information is so important. The following year, they outfitted half of their department and their use-of-force incidents went down by 60% and the officer complaints actually went down by 88%. There were several people in the department who were a little bit concerned about privacy issues and those were addressed through a policy. Obviously, the law, especially the evidence code, if we're talking to a witness who requests privacy, we can protect that information without having to continue to talk with them and videotape their information. Going into somebody's home, obviously, we would have to abide by their privacy issues. And then we have victims of violent crime, victim of sexual assault and child abuse cases. And the law affords us those abilities to protect people under those certain circumstances. We also have Public Records Act requests. The government code specifically states that we have to retain video evidence or video information for up to 12 months. Now, it's between criminal evidence and just normal videos. We would keep that for about 13 months. Criminal cases are primarily dictated by the district attorney's office. Two years after a case has been adjudicated, that's when they would go ahead and tell us that we could get or dispose of evidence. And we'd also work with our records retention policy to ensure that that is the same process. So you can see that it is pretty valuable from a transparency point and also from the officer's standpoint that it provides them some level of protection as well. And regarding the funding, the budget amendment would have no impact on the general fund. We have sufficient funds that are available in our unassigned supplemental law enforcement services fund balance. We started the fiscal year with a beginning balance of $119,000. Of this, this is $99,000 from the previous year. We have two years to spend that. And so we are starting to reach that point in the end of the fiscal year where we need to spend that. We do have additional funds available so that we could, if there are any costs over and above that amount, obviously, I would come back to you to request those additional funds. But we do have that available, again, without tackling into our general fund. And with that, I am available for questions. Sergeant Gonzalez is here as well. And we also engaged Larry Laurent. At the time, was our IT support services manager, but he's also available for questions in regards to warranty. We do have a 90-day money-back guarantee if, for some reason, there is an issue. But again, we did speak to several other agencies and the ones that do have the equipment have been very, very pleased with what they've purchased.
Thank you, Chief.
Michael?
Chief, how are these videos with regard to public records requests? Can the public request any of these videos as part of the Public Records Act?
So there are several exemptions within the Public Records Act that would allow us to protect that video. If it's an ongoing investigation or such as some of the other cases that I mentioned. And so we do have several exemptions in regards to that. We would evaluate each one as we do with our Public Records Act requests. We work with the city clerk and the city attorney's office to make sure that any proper redactions that need to be made in particular cases are made before the release of any information.
Are the install costs into the police vehicles included in this budget?
Yes.
Let's see. I noticed here, use-of-force incidents. Can you define that?
So a use-of-force incident would be if the officer had to go hands-on and use a control to take a subject down or over the top of a car, the use of a taser, the use of a baton, or even if there was deadly force. But all of those other cases would be in the event of a non-lethal use of force.
Can, is there the ability for an officer, for any reason, to shut the system down and go dark on their daily routine?
So the, the car video system actually can be started in several ways. One, we can control it by speed. So if the car goes over a certain speed, it automatically goes on. It also, in the event of an accident, if the car was hit for some reason, it would actually activate the system. And then with the, with the RTF piece of it, the record after the fact, we could actually pick up how the accident happened before it actually did happen, which would be extremely critical in a civil case. And so we can actually go back. So the body camera and the vehicle camera actually has record after the fact and that we would pick up that information beforehand.
What I'm trying to bring out, and this is certainly the wrong police department to even suggest this about, but can a police officer do something off-camera that someone could claim they did and it's not captured?
Well, that's where our policy would come into play to ensure that we would make sure we would have those cameras on at the appropriate time. Again, understanding privacy concerns, evidentiary concerns or any types of investigations that involve minors or witnesses who want to be protected, through the policy, the officer would be afforded the opportunity to turn it off.
How is the information downloaded to, I'm assuming that we have servers in the PD that will store all of this? And Larry should start coming up here because my next three questions are probably for him.
It's actually a standalone server. We would have our own server system, which would make it easier for our IT department so that they would not have to service that piece of it for us.
Is it physically uploaded to the server or does it happen when the officer walks into the PD?
It actually automatically happens when they get within a certain distance of the server as they pull into the parking lot.
Got it. Let's see, Larry?
Good evening.
Do you have the ability to maintain the in-house hardware that's coming with this?
Yes, it integrates pretty closely with our current infrastructure. Same operating systems, the same database system. So it's not, the learning curve for that sort of thing isn't there. We do recommend that, you know, that we do get the warranty hardware software for a five-year period because it would offload a lot of that basic support to the vendor.
Okay. Does this proposal, in your opinion, provide adequate storage for the hours and hours of recording?
You know, that, that I don't know. That changes a lot, but what it does do, it has the capacity to add storage on the go. It's 16, actually can handle 16 hard drives. I believe we're current, when we implemented, I believe it has eight. So there's eight additional hard drive slots available in the, in the server.
Can that be translated into hours of video?
I don't know, you know, it depends.
Pretty high resolution.
High resolution, yeah. Based on the analysis that we gave them, the number of cars, the number of shifts, that sort of thing, this is the solution based on their experience that they said would cover our data needs.
For 12-month storage?
For, yeah, for 13-month storage and some buffer because you do also have to keep up, you know, evidence longer than that.
So you can offload images to be stored in a static environment?
Yes, in other, in other locations for the district attorney, wherever the data needs to go.
What do you, what would you consider this technology's life cycle to be?
Probably five to seven years. The car, a lot longer because it's not subject to the same sort of stresses of, you know, something a body camera would. But the body camera at the price it is, you know, it's kind of a, it is not consumable, but it does, you are going to have to replace them once in a while. But the in-car, based on our experience with other things in the vehicle, five to seven years. And that just may be, you know, that, that may just be pieces of it. The cameras may last significantly longer. That just may be the processor for the new types of videos and that sort of thing.
I understand about the hardware. I understand about the consumables.
Yes.
What about the technology itself?
You know, it's HD. So you're getting about as good as you can get right now. The nice thing is, is if the cameras change, you can probably just install new cameras and still use the same pieces of equipment. You've wired it capability, yes, hard, obviously, technology changes quickly.
Leading to my next question, which is, do we have in this budget annual software fees, upgrades, maintenance fees?
We are, as part of, part of the project, we are going to get the five-year maintenance and warranty piece of it. We're going to have to go in for, as, you know, to schedule replacements as we go, you know, to build into our internal service funds. Well, these things need to be scheduled, you know, over a period of time. You don't say replace all of them in one year. You pick some of them, you replace it year one, then some at year two, so that way you're, you're refreshing the technology. That's if the product is working now.
And this five-year plan is for software revs as well, right?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Good, thanks.
Good.
Good. Thanks.
Questions?
Just a number of questions. I'm trying to read the order sheet here. We have nine vehicle systems, two motorcycle systems, is that what I got out of this? And how many personal cameras?
Twenty.
Okay. And are any of those extras, or everything's just accounted for?
Everything is accounted for. Each officer's body camera would go into a docking station where it would be downloaded, and so it would be specifically assigned to that person.
And do we need twenty of them?
Well, it would give us at least one extra one.
That's what I'm asking.
I mean, but they're not all being used at once, so why do we need twenty?
That's correct.
So why, you know, why do we need twenty?
Well, sometimes we do have the detectives who do dress down for special events, and so we work different shifts. Some of them are going to be recharged, and so to ensure that they're all charged appropriately and ready to go at any given time, then we can at least deploy them in any given situation.
Yeah. My question, I was okay with the spare. I mean, that was, I know that things happen, and then all of a sudden, well, say, an officer goes down a motorcycle, and his camera's damaged, does he have a, you know, are we going to have an extra one to replace that right away?
Yes.
Is that built into this?
Yes.
Probably, we don't have an extra car unit, because it seems are the cost of those. Those are just as-is, but there are a couple personal extra cameras.
That's correct. And patrol vehicles will also have a car camera that'll cover the backseat where the, somebody is handcuffed and placed in the backseat. It'll help us with audio and video in the back to ensure that somebody might be trying to discard evidence. That'll be important to capture that as well.
Thank you very much.
Rudy, does this, do these things have the ability to live feed? In other words, if you wanted to watch your officer, or he calls there's a situation, can they live feed?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. Next technology. The other question is, where, what other part of your body of your officers can they put another gadget on? And we've got so many things on them now that...
There's very little space. And there are opportunities out there. There are certain products where they're on a pair of protective glasses. Some of them actually have them on their lapel, so there are various places to put them. The biggest challenge for people to understand is, video evidence, or at least videos, always don't capture everything. I think if you look at major sporting events on TV today, even with all the high-tech equipment they have, they still can't conclusively determine if somebody was out of bounds or not, or who touched the ball last. And so we don't want to get caught up as a community and think that this is going to capture everything, because it absolutely, probably will not. But at least, right now, we have nothing, and it would be a good step, I think, moving forward to get something.
Thank you, Chief. Josh?
Yeah, I'm interested in the situation of you're informing a person, you're going to be filming them, you know, privacy issues. I don't know the law here, so I'd like to know a little bit more about that, from your experience.
On the public street, we can notify them, and we can record the activities that are involved in the public area.
And notify them?
Yes.
So you have to notify them?
It's not that we have to notify them, but we will be notifying them, and that's something that we would want to do so that they know that that is happening.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So there'll be a training for our officers in regards to our procedure?
Yes.
Okay. Supposing you took some of those recordings and showed them to someone else, is there a privacy issue there?
Well, there absolutely would be, and that would be something in the policy that we would probably not be doing, unless it was evidentiary of value, such as taking to the DA's office to show them. That's not something that we'd be posting anywhere.
Okay. So this is for internal use, unless there's a request of public access?
That's correct.
Okay. I notice you have three officers here from our police department. I'm very curious, since Sergeant, you led the review, if there's any comments that any of you'd like to make, the experience that you found out from other departments.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So Officer Evans and Guillermo Vasquez and I went to other different agencies and found that WatchGuard was the best, and it was because the field of view that records is a hundred and thirty degrees. The company was able to figure out that a hundred and thirty degrees is what we, as humans, concentrate on. That's our focus. So other cameras, they only have like, maybe a four-eighty by six-hundred. So that made this much, much better for us.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Sure. Thank you. Any other comments? The personal experience, I think, is really important, because you'll be using it.
I'll give you real-life personal experience. I was riding a motorcycle and was hit. Cameras were working, litigation would probably be a little bit different.
Ah.
Besides that, like Chief and them are saying, the importance of cameras, there's a huge movement in society right now for us to be videotaped. Like the Chief said, if you look, the use-of-force stuff goes down. A camera on your body also causes us as officers to try to think before reacting, which is better for our community. So in that aspect, it's a good thing. Unfortunately, like Chief said, it might not get everything, and it might get everything, and sometimes what is recorded, public might not like. And that is, of course, of having cameras, but that does go to the whole public release and access to cameras. The good thing for, but Sergeant Gonzalez was talking about with the field of view is, the camera's recording what we're seeing, so if you're turning your head, obviously, if the camera's pointing this way, you're not going to film what's this way. So it's going to be a process of officers learning with their bodies and the cameras, and that's going to take a while. That's not going to happen overnight, but we have a good training department, and our agency is pretty much on board with our chief about, you know, going ahead with this and making sure that things are done the right way, and that our community is taken care of, because that's our greatest concern. And we like to be transparent, and our POA likes to be transparent, and we work for a chief who likes to be transparent, and that's one of the reasons why we're bringing it forward to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
So any other member of the public would like to address this, please?
Gary Richard Arnold, Mayor, Councilman, and Councilwoman. Across the United States, there's about twelve thousand five hundred and seventy-five local police departments, and they're locally controlled by cities, towns, and counties. And the local police serve the local people, and there's a national police force that serves the national government. And I believe we have a federal government that's very jealous of local power. And back in nineteen thirty-three, after the Reichstag fire, Hitler passed an Enabling Act, pretty much as the Homestead, or the Homeland Security Act was passed after nine-eleven. Reading from William Shire, his Rise and Fall of the Third Reich, he writes in nineteen thirty-six, for the first time in German history, a national police force was put under the control of Himmler. Now, under Homeland Security, Bush had Marcus Wolf from STASI and Provokov from the KGB to set up Homeland Security, and we've had the DNAA and other abuses. We need local police officers overseen by local representation, such as what's happening here tonight. The central coast political machine maintains actions throughout this area. There have been cities that have adopted and brought in military vehicles, which really are unacceptable. Neighborhood watch, a counterfeit of Neighborhood Watch has been adopted by the county sheriff's department, is called Next Door. It was put together by the CIA. It's an informant program in this county at this time, and the newspapers haven't mentioned it. I think this is great. By providing cameras, it will protect your officers from slander. It will help prevent outright lies. Criminals knowing that they're captured on camera aren't as likely to enhance their penalties by getting more violent and/or running away, as we saw recently on TV within the last couple of days. If they know they're already captured on camera, they're less likely to run. I think it's going to reduce your insurance, and a million dollars, you know, a hundred thousand dollars can save a million in an accidental or deliberate shooting. And you owe it to your honest police department and the families and the people in your community. I urge you to keep your police department out of the control of the federal government. After all, Washington DC, that's telling you how to run things, has the worst crime in all of America. Presently also, which I think should be an alert to some people, again, it's not carried in our local newspapers, there's a state, eight-state operation in which federal police are acting against the American people, with Utah and Texas being labeled as enemy states. And this is a violation of Posse Comitatus, and I believe that we're losing a lot of our rights, but this particular action tonight can help save the deliberate antagonition that, discord between the public and the police, which is deliberate and is being funded by Kellogg, Rockefeller, Carnegie, and other foundations that send in riot kits to Ferguson. I think this is a great action for your police and for your people.
Thank you, Gary. We return to council.
I'd like to stop, start by recommending, or moving the recommended action of accepting the quote from WatchGuard Digital Services Systems, and also authorize the police department to utilize the SLESF funds to make the purchase. And in the way of comment, as usual, our police department is on the forefront of serving the community, and I lament that the police departments that are faced with serious challenges are not as proactive, and the communities that probably need this the least are stepping forward and doing it. So, you know, keep doing the great job, and I think we need to give them the tools they need, and I think this is a good thing.
Second. We have motion second. Any discussion?
Just a quick comment. Yeah, I've been on the council for two years, and I think I find this to be the easiest measure to vote for. It's free, it's transparent, it protects our officers, and it affords our citizens peace of mind, so it's the best win-win I think we could have, and I'm happy, happy, and I hope this works good for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a funny, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Harland?
Aye.
Councilmember Botter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Norton?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us. Okay, we're going to, we're going to pick up an item that was pulled from the consent agenda, and that's the zoning code updates issuance option schedule that was approved by the Planning Commission and sent back to the council. Josh, you pulled this item, so I'll let you start.
Yeah, I pulled this item because I'd like the public to get the presentation that I know was prepared earlier. Also, this is, to me, another example of the city reaching out to the public to involve them in a decision which is very critical, the zoning code update. So take it away. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Bertrand and City Council. Next slide.
You're going.
Sorry about that. Okay, as the council recalls, at your last meeting in March, you directed staff to go back to the Planning Commission, work out an accelerated schedule to get through the zoning code process, and work through the issues and options paper. So at the Planning Commission's last meeting, a week ago, they took action. We presented the Planning Commission with three options. One, to have three special meetings per month. A second, to have two special meetings, and then finally, a slower version with just one special meeting per month. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend to your body that they have two special meetings per month, Mondays and Thursdays, scheduling allowed for the chambers, and the process would be kicked off on April the thirtieth with a joint Planning Commission, City Council meeting. At that meeting, the concept was that you would take a survey that we included in your packet. We would present the options and the results of that survey at the meeting, hopefully with the goal of narrowing the range of issues. I'm sorry, I can't really see my slides very well. In any event, go to the calendar, please. So the calendar just shows the days that we did select, again, Mondays and Thursdays. Mondays, the chambers are basically available. The off-Thursdays, we would also meet. This schedule will take us to the end of July. City Council meetings would resume sometime in August, late August, early September. And I'm available for questions.
So you think that six Planning Commission meetings are sufficient to cover the zoning?
We're hoping so. We're allocating about three or four hours per meeting. There's eighteen issues. That leaves over an hour per issue. With any luck, some of those will go pretty quickly, maybe we'll narrow some at the joint meeting. Certainly, if we need more time, we'll adjust the schedule as we go.
And we'll be doing the same thing on the City Council calendar, six meetings?
That is the current strategy.
I think we penciled in four with the idea that it could go longer, thinking that through the dialogue that we have with the, with the public and with the Planning Commission, again, maybe some of those issues are narrowed. But I think it's going to be something that's dynamic, and we're going to learn as we go as to how much time some of this is going to take.
We can talk a lot longer than Planning Commissioners, trust me. Let's have a contest.
No, no.
Rich, what is the date scheduled for the joint meeting between the Planning Commission?
It'd be April thirtieth, Thursday evening.
April thirtieth? Okay. And right now, we're only scheduling one of those meetings, right?
If you take action tonight, we would post this schedule and go live with it, and start working towards meeting these dates. April thirtieth would be the first meeting.
But one joint meeting, though, is what you're talking about?
Correct.
That's the April thirtieth meeting, is the joint meeting?
But I think if we think we need another one, we'll just schedule one.
We can decide that process, yeah.
What time is that meeting?
We are suggesting six o'clock starts for all the meetings through this process.
I would not be able to attend the April thirtieth meeting.
Okay. So how does this conflict with budget hearings?
There are a couple of weeks when there will be, you know, two or three night meetings for staff, but they won't conflict with the City Council calendar. They would be held on nights that budget hearings were not being held.
Well, we're going to be in budget hearings in May, right?
Right.
Yes. So there's no conflicts with these directly, but it just means busy, busy weeks for staff?
Okay, well, I'm talking about council right now.
No. There's no conflict between the council meeting, the budget hearings, and these hearings.
So right now, I'm seeing, in May, we see this, the seventh is the Planning Commission, the fourteenth, and the twenty-eighth is the City Council meeting. We're also meeting the Thursday of the twenty-first and the eighteenth. Is that correct? Is that what I'm reading?
I think this is just a highlight, that this is just highlighting here all of the different dates, so this is showing that there's a regularly scheduled piece here, City Council meeting here, here, and here, and then there would be an extra meeting in May on the twenty-first and on the eighteenth.
Okay. Are we going to have any budget sessions in between there?
I believe there's a Wednesday.
I believe the twenty-seventh is the first budget hearing, if I remember correctly.
Okay, that's okay.
So, so keep in mind, this process in May and June is going to be in the Planning Commission's hands. Outside of the joint meeting at the beginning, it'll be the Planning Commission. So the council will be considering the budget, Planning Commission will be looking at the zoning code, and then hopefully, at the conclusion of this, it transitions to a City Council project.
Rich, can you explain what you mean by the questionnaire that's coming? What do you, what do you mean by that?
We did include a questionnaire in your packet this evening. It had the eighteen issues outlined in the issues and options paper, and the options that we presented with an option to do something else, whether it be a hybrid, or if you had a unique idea that we didn't think of. What we thought is if each member of the Planning Commission, City Council took that survey, supplied it to staff by April twentieth, that would give us time to present those results at the joint meeting. Maybe we could narrow some issues and find areas where we really need to talk more about and have policy discussions.
Okay.
Presuming that if the Planning Commission, the City Council all felt the same way before we got into any discussion, and it maybe wasn't an issue area at all. So trying to identify if those opportunities exist.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions, staff?
No.
Is there anyone in the public who'd like to address this on this issue? Okay. Back to council. Your wishes?
I move to accept this.
You moved? You accept?
Second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for your report.
Thanks, Rich.